I'd like to call and order the Monroeville Planning Commission meeting for December 16th, 2020, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
On this state's own, intended for the public which stands on the nation's own. Indivisible, eternally just as a role.
Thank you, please proceed. We are down a couple of members this evening. Mr. Deal, the chairman, is absent, as well as Ms. McAdo, the recording secretary, but we will proceed without them. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting in November of 2020.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Obstained from that vote. First order of business is item 20-1-Z, Clover Communities in Monroeville LLC. The applicant is requesting to rezone 57.982 acres of property, currently zoned L, special use, to R4 multi-family residential. This property is located at 3926 Logan's Ferry Road, Brown's Airport, tax parcel 741-R-333. The applicant is here, right?
Yes. Do you want me to keep that mask on, or?
Yeah, you can say your name and tell us what you.
Okay. I'm Robert Jack, Senior Development Director with Clover Development. And as you mentioned, we're here seeking rezone approval for 58 acres, 26 Logan's Ferry Road. This is the former Brown's Airport site. I'll just give you a little bit of background on Clover. We are senior residential developers, started in 1987. We have about 30 of these senior apartment buildings, for lack of a better description, throughout the country. About 11 more under construction. Our market rate, we develop, we own, we operate our facilities. We don't have any HUD properties in our portfolio. We've never converted one to low income or old age. And so, we do have, we do have a few other sites in the Pittsburgh area. We have a project open in Bethel Park, North Fayette Township. We have a project open in Hemfield Township, and another one in Robinson Township about to open. And we just broke ground in Brighton Township, Beaver County. I don't know how well you can see that, but this is the site, kind of an odd-shaped parcel. As I said, it's the existing Brown's Airport or Pittsburgh/Monroeville Airport. Now, we're seeking to rezone the entire 58 acres. Our development will take place mostly on about 10 acres out near Logan's Ferry Road. Of course, the site plan hasn't been set yet, we're just at the rezone, but the site is zoned L. As you can see, it's the purple, the purple on the map there, surrounded by R2, and we are seeking to rezone to R4, which will permit multifamily housing. Zoomed in, look at what our site plan would look like. It will be a three-story building, about 122 parking spaces, one per unit. There will be some leasable garages around the perimeter. And again, we are market rate, pay full taxes, not looking for any tax breaks or subsidies. In talking to Paul, and then talking with the Ward Councilman, Mr. Wilson, it sounded like traffic was going to be a concern. So we had Wooster do an analysis of what could be developed today with the L zoning versus what could be developed with the R4 zoning. In the L district, we could develop about 272,000 square feet of office space, hour trip generation of about 282 AM peak, 295 PM peak. And we looked at, with the R4, we could do about, I think it was 120 single-family home units that would give us peak flows of about 90 AM and 121 PM. I also had them look at, and this wasn't in what I submitted, but I had them look at apartments. You know, if we did the entire property in apartments, we could do about 484 units. And the AM peak would be about 119, PM would be 123, so.
So those are all worst-case scenarios compared to what you're proposing?
Right. Yeah, right. So what is zoned today? We could actually have, we could generate than what we're proposing, is what we're trying to say.
Paul, do you have copies of this?
Yes. And I don't know if Rob's going to get to it or not, I sort of interrupted him. The traffic information that he sent to us from Wooster, it indicates that there won't trigger the need for a traffic study. That's how.
Our development by itself, right.
Yes.
Yeah, now when the balance happens, you know, if we sell it to somebody and they come in, you know, they would likely need to.
That'll be their headache, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, our peak hours, well under 100 trips, I think it's 32 or something. So a couple images from some of our built projects. Yeah, that's it. I'll take questions, or?
You want to go back to those images, just so people know what the product looks like?
Sure.
What's the intent for the remaining acreage there that's not getting sold?
So, we don't know yet. Our preference would have been to subdivide from the seller and just buy the eight or 10 acres that we need. They want to sell the whole thing, so we'll subdivide and we'll sell that to somebody else. But no, you know, we talked to the guys next door that are doing Maple Crest, maybe there's interest there, I'm not sure. Certainly nothing firm on that.
Just, I'm pretty sure we talked about this, you're aware that there's undermined.
We are, yeah.
Areas undermined.
Yeah, yeah, and we're going to work with the same geotech that did the property next door, so, yeah.
Paul, has there been any citizen pushback at all, or comments?
I haven't received any comments in favor or opposition. Speaking, I believe it's a good development for Monroeville. Because of the undermine, you know, it's a difficult property to develop and to sell. So, you know, I certainly welcome Clover and their development. I think it's good for Monroeville, you know, senior housing, low impact, and, you know, Monroeville's an aging community, I think it'd be well received.
Based on your experience, would you use piles, then, or fill the mines?
Probably fill the mines. So we had a mine on our site in Robinson and in Hemfield, and we grout filled both of those. Now, I mean, it'll depend on what the report says and how it comes back, but that would be my initial reaction anyhow, yeah.
So this being senior, what's the typical size of a unit that you guys build, and what's the average cost of those?
Yeah, so we'll have a mix of one and two-bedroom. Really, it's only a few one-bedroom, most people want the two-bedroom. One-bedroom are about 600 square feet, two-bedroom about 800 square feet. We have some two-bed, bath-and-a-halves that are a little larger, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, and the cost, you asked me the cost. One-bedroom probably, would probably rent for about $1,150, two-bedroom $1,250, $1,350.
And is this just for, like, independent living?
That's right, yeah. We don't have any onsite medical staff. No, they can have in-home care, obviously, but we don't provide any of that.
Any, like, places for them to eat there, like a cafeteria or anything?
So we do have some community, some common areas, but they, each unit has a, and so they generally prepare their own meals. We do have a community room with a full kitchen in it for events, birthday parties, that sort of thing, but, yeah. We have a fitness center, a salon, library, some outdoor amenities.
Any other amenities?
Some outdoor amenities, patio space, we have a coffee bar, library, yeah, pretty much what I mentioned, the fitness center, salon.
And that's typical of your other developments?
Yes.
No sport activities?
No, and as far as, like, active recreation, no. It's, each unit does have its own balcony or patio.
You don't have, like, a common bocce court, or?
We don't, no.
Juffel court or anything like that?
No, no. We do, we will have an activities director, and there'll be.
Or they call it paddle ball, or?
Yeah.
Paddle ball, yeah.
Yeah, no, we don't have any of those.
That'd be nice.
Do you have a pool?
We find they don't get used, though. We have a couple of projects, yeah, they just, they don't get used.
I guess, or?
Or there'll be no pool?
No swimming pool, no.
No workout, like a?
Yeah, there will be a workout.
Workout area?
Yeah, there will be a workout area, yes. Yep, no swimming pool, though.
When you move on to council, you may want to have a list of some potential items.
Sure, yeah.
Just, I'm sure it'll get brought up again.
Sure, yeah, I can have pictures of the common areas and that sort of thing as well.
Any other questions or comments? Any, how much money in the audience?
This is a comment, but I don't know how you're in it. Where you had the site located?
Yes.
It would appear, well, I went upside down. It would appear that on the right side, if the building was shifted a little bit to the, I guess there's no north, oh, here's north.
North is straight up, yeah.
Shifted a little bit west, and you planted some more trees, you could maybe keep the taller building almost out of view from the residents in that one loop.
Well, we could certainly get to that when we get to the land development portion of it. Right now, this is just a rezoning.
Yeah.
You know, the site plan that he, conceptual, it could change drastically.
There are a couple of gas lines out there that we're trying to dance around as well, so, yeah. Lots of constraints.
Mr. Wild, and I just want one other question, too, just to make sure that we're consistent. The property around it is zoned R also, there's not a chance of spot zoning or anything?
Correct. It's going from L special use to a residential use, so it will actually be more in line with the zoning districts around it.
The facade is siding.
Siding, and there'll be some brick and stone accents as well. Yeah, and we'll, we can get into elevations and so forth at land development, provide full, full details on that.
Should we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for 20-1-Z.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. I'll take a roll call vote here. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Morganetti?
Yes.
Ms. Grifthe?
Yes.
And Mr. Conlan?
Yes.
And I will abstain. And we must first, thank you. Next two items will be 20-4-St. and 20-6-C, both KDP Monroeville P.A. LLC and Monroe Shops. 20-4-St., the applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct four buildings, one grocery store, one bank, and two restaurants with associated site amenities. Property is 4.8 acres and located at the intersection of William Penn Highway and Duff Road, tax parcel 743-G-70 in the C2 Business Commercial Zoning District. And item 20-6-C, the applicant is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Section 403 of the Planned Group Units of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance Number 1443, as amended, to permit three principal structures on one property. Again, the property is 4.8 acres and located at the intersection of William Penn Highway and Duff Road, tax parcel 743-G-70 in the C2 Business Commercial Zoning District. Yep, come forward, say your name, please, and let us know what your plan is.
Sure. Steve Panko, Key Development, out of 515 North State, Chicago, Illinois. I want to say thanks for being here tonight. I did fly in, and I heard that you were debating, so, weather to, so, I wanted to say thank you for weathering the storm, so to speak, so.
No problem.
Literally.
Yeah, literally.
I did not, I did not check the weather, so I did not know there was a blizzard, so, kind of interesting, kind of fun.
Yeah, glad you're able to get it in, actually.
Thank, and thank, yeah. So, we're here in front of you, I believe you know the piece on William Penn, Frank Cicadas has been working on it for 10 years. He has done, I think he's done, I've been doing this for 20-plus years, I've never seen anything like this. I will tell you that what he's endeavored out there is unique and very, very impressive. So, so we have the opportunity, we have the property under contract, we've been working with several users, we're pushing, as you know, COVID is down, especially in the retail world, but I believe we're going to have signed leases with these users, at least three out of four before year-end, that's what I'm pushing for. One being the grocery is kind of the anchor, so to speak, and they're going to be on the east side. And then we have a bank, a really nice restaurant, about 3,600 square feet, and then another drive-through restaurant that's going to be relocating in the city, so. So, can't really read the parking, but the grocery store will be on the east side, there's approximately, I don't know exactly what it says, but I know that they require, the grocery requires 95 spaces. And then the other three retailers, we're going to have an REA park up towards the Duff Road, that employee parking over to that side. The bank will have three drive-throughs, one ATM and two drive-throughs. The restaurant in the middle, there's one in Robinson right now that we currently own, it's a national chain that's growing. It will have indoor seating, and then also have to-go spaces, it's a barbecue location.
Very good.
Yeah, it's fantastic. And then the last one is a drive-through restaurant, it'll have the escape lane, and I've worked diligently with Paul on, and they're going to be relocating from another location in the city. So, the.
Use that, feel free to take it over and set it on the, just, were you in it? And Jared, you can zoom in on this for him. And on the flip side of that is one of the elevations.
Yeah. You got all, yeah, all right. Well, he got the name on there. So, Frank's done a good job on this, filling in the dirt, it's been, it's been very, very, very closely monitored, it's one of our biggest concerns, making sure that the lifts and the fill is done. We've been working with the city, with Frank's, the sellers, Geotech, and then we have our own Geotech that's been monitoring it, every lift, so to speak, as it's gone in. So, currently, this is the same location that Frank got approved a couple of years ago, which is entrance onto, from William Penn, so we're keeping the same location, so that's been approved from before. Additionally.
Can you slide that plan around so they can see on the monitor what you're pointing toward?
Yeah, okay. So, one change is that this lineup, and we have Bob Goetz, is that how you pronounce that?
Goetz.
Goetz, here from Trans Associates to explain to us this intersection, how it lines up, and what we're proposing to do, which is to change the intersection so it's back 75 feet to meet the same exact location that was approved previously. There was some discussion between city and our traffic consultant, city's traffic consultant, that indicated that this location, even though we, that's what we, is to line up, from a safety perspective, is not, does not work, and so they're requesting us to put the entrance further to the rear 75 feet. So we believe we've got city comments back, we're going to address those comments, and then within those comments, we're also going to be modifying this road so that it is within the safe distance. And Bob can address that more if you'd like. So I think that's, you know, I can answer any questions regarding the site plan, I'll give you a quick little elevation.
We also have PDFs of the ones you emailed me, if you want to, you want, can you flash through those, Jared?
So that's our grocer. So, they're doing very, very well these days, they're expanding all over. I don't know if you noticed, but they're related to Trader Joe's, sister company or cousins or something related, so they got both ends of the market. And all these just really doing very, very well. Sidebar, during this COVID, I actually went into Aldi, bought $200 of groceries, four items of each, and delivered them to single mothers of two or more children, and I was actually, one of the first times I've been in Aldi, plenty, I haven't really done anything like that. I was surprised and just really, really excited about how much you can get for your dollar. It was really, really a great, great thing, it was probably the highlight of, you know, during this last night. Great company, great products, they actually have a nice wine selection, too, these days, which surprised me. They have meats, they have all kinds of dry goods. So, this is their new prototype, they're actually spending a lot of money on it, you can see the wedge here, it looks very, very nice. I've been doing Aldis for 20-plus years, so they've come a long way from their first days. So this is Aldi, and then, what else you got here?
Jared, I think there were some separate PDFs, some individual files, not the PowerPoint, just showed the other buildings. There you go.
Okay, that's our bank. So, they're growing in this market, they want to, we do have an approved deal with them, we're moving forward to lease with them, and this is their prototype, they'll have one ATM with two drive-through lanes. The next one is, this is your relocation from the existing center, this is a brand-new prototype, they're excited about building, the other one's been dated, and they're going to have a drive-through with an escape lane for our discussions with the city and your code. And then the last one, so that's a drive-through, obviously, exciting as that is. All right, this doesn't look as well as it's going to be built, but this is the Robinson, they're doing very, very, very well throughout the United States, I've built three or four of them in Chicago, here is the Robinson. It's a concept that's done extremely well, they have to-go now, they are not doing a drive-through, so that's the good news there, but they do have to-go and they do have delivery, and they have seats inside to tune. Your code is here. So they have one for 80 seats, so I don't know exactly how many seats they have, I believe they have something like 140 seats or something, close to that, so, but it's a great, great concept, so. Anyways, that's, I'm sure we're going to get into a lot of specifics, but that's really the overview of what we have. We're excited, especially during these times, to have a pulse, so to speak. I was in Mission today, and no one's seating inside these days, so it makes it really, really hard, so hopefully the vaccine and the winter will be over and people will be on their way. We plan on breaking ground on this in the spring, would like to deliver in the fall, have these stores open this time next year.
One question I have, Steve.
Sure.
The space between the bank and the restaurant, is that pedestrian or vehicular, was the use in there?
Between the bank and the restaurant here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the drive-throughs for the bank.
Okay.
So, I can answer any, any and all questions, including traffic questions.
Take any questions from the board?
I'm curious about the scarpment in the back.
The what?
Yeah.
The wall in the back.
Oh, yeah.
You had, you had mentioned you have an outfit that has done careful review and of the whole progress of that.
Yep.
How is it supported?
Oh, now you're getting into detail, so I, I'm going to refer over.
I can give you an overview, I'm not a geotechnical engineer.
I'm not either.
It's, I do know it's 18 and 7 going up, the inches.
Steepness.
Each lift, yeah.
Yeah. The lifts are very thin, they're only, you know, eight or 12 inches, they would compact that with a sheep's foot compactor and then a smooth drum roller. In between each lift, there's a material, it looks sort of like ladders or chain link fence, so every eight, 10, 12 inches, there's this material that goes back a calculated distance, you know, 20, 30, 40 feet, and then there's another lifting material put onto that and smashed down, another lift smashed down, another, so I mean, it's built.
So it's embedded with steel?
Yes.
Steel?
We've monitored it, their geotechnical engineers monitored it, we've, our geotechnical engineer, the municipal geotechnical engineer has reviewed the data, and everything has passed. So it's a very tall wall, I believe it's over 100 feet, it's the tallest.
68.
Okay.
Is it tallest points? Well, I, he told me it was 68 feet.
It's tall.
It's taller than?
It's tall.
It's, yeah.
But we've been very concerned about it, and we believe it's been built as good as it could be built.
Can I ask?
Sure.
The proper curing time for that product that would make it?
It's immediate, it's not like concrete or anything, as soon as it gets compacted, you could build on it.
Soon as it's packed, it becomes?
Yeah, it doesn't have to sit a certain number of time.
Like there's not a period of time?
No, they have a nuclear densometer, it's a machine about this big, once it gets compacted, they set it on there, and it calculates the density of the material, and it gives back a number, and it has to be over 90%. On this site, it might even been 50%.
I think it was 97, 96, 97.
So I mean, every, all of their numbers came back above what was required, so I mean, it's, according to the math, it looks, it looks good.
Well, and not only that, you have Frank's guy who performed the work, so you have that geotech firm, then you have the Village's geotech firm, and then you have our geotech firm, all checking the same data. So you have three different independent firms looking over this and making sure, it's our biggest concern, so.
And it was designed by Tensar, who is the proprietor of the geo-fabric that goes in between those lifts. So, you know, the person that designed it is the one that developed it, so I don't know that you could come up with a better solution.
Are there examples of it?
I will get you that answer, how's that sound? I do not know.
I was told down by, across from Coles, where the Bob's Furniture Outlet is, there's a similar wall there, but it's 20, 30 years old now.
Older the better.
Yeah, nothing about the bridge. I don't know if it's exactly the same as this, but a former planning commission member was telling me about it, he said, "Oh, we already have one of those here in Monroeville," so I don't know if he's accurate or not, but he's, there seems to be a local example there.
And our deal with the grocer is a ground lease, and so they've actually analyzed all this data also, and they're comfortable with it, so they're going to be building the building themselves.
So, at the base of that wall, I drive by their office, it's pretty raw down there. Is there a plan to, like, make it more aesthetically, for the people who live in that?
Yeah.
That plan down there?
I know that part of that's detention.
There is a landscaping plan, and some of that area is addressed on the landscaping plan.
What is the sort of hazard or fall protection off of the top of your property that are over that back wall?
I do know that there's a fence back there that's going to be installed.
There's a guide rail for cars, and then there's, I believe it's a six-foot-high fence beyond that, so that nobody can accidentally wander over the edge.
And it's the same that was approved back when Frank was coming through.
How about erosion of the wall? I assume you don't let any water from the surface get onto the downhill's?
Correct. And actually, I probably should have had my civil engineer here. Correct. And, and actually, I probably should have had my civil engineer here. What I do know is that there's drainage un, underneath. Uh, that actually all drains out to the back and towards the detention.
And the material that was used for that reinforced zone is free draining material. It's not clay. That was one of the holdups with uh, the previous developer. He needed to get a very specific material to build that fill from. So even if water wouldn't find its way into there, theoretically, it would drain out and not build up. Do you have a question, Mr. Morgany?
I wanted to ask you if you had any other uh comments or concerns from your perspective.
Sidewalks and decorative lights. Uh, there's sidewalk uh required along Route twenty-two. And I believe there's a section on Duff Road. It doesn't show up on the plans. I think I missed that in my review letter. Uh, so uh, you know, uh, our ordinance requires sidewalk on any, sidewalk on any public street. And then decorative streetlights. Uh, you're, you're in our street scape corridor. Uh, so you'll also need to install matching decorative lights uh for along Route twenty-two.
Okay, expected the sidewalks and um, uh, the streetlights will be acceptable. Sure.
Uh, the plan for the wall is to just cover it with grass?
It's already growing.
No bushes, no?
No, you can put it there.
It's more like moss. That's what it looks like, doesn't it?
Uh, it's supposed to droop over so that it looks like a green wall. That's the intent behind it.
Do they near the grass or?
Uh, it's.
I'm sorry, I'm obsessed with this wall.
Well, it's pretty, it, it's something to be obsessed with. I mean, it's impressive, to be honest with you. It's, I've never seen anything like it. I should probably have Frank here, because Frank would spend two hours, three hours with you going through the details of this, so.
Been a big part of his life.
Yeah, you may, you, you may want uh Frank or your civil engineer to attend if it goes to council. Answer more questions.
I thought we were, uh, when he, since he already had the plan approved, I thought we were, we were a little bit further along, but no, I appreciate that, absolutely.
Any other comments or?
Were there any springs uncovered?
Nothing.
Water springs at all?
Nope.
Because that could be a problem.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. I've not been told. I haven't seen any in the reports.
Oh, are you comfortable with the wall?
Yes, I've watched it go up. Uh, I've had many conversations with the municipal geotechnical engineer. Uh, they've reviewed it. Um, and like I said, the, it's built as good as it could be built.
Uh, during the construction of the wall, were there any complaints by citizens?
The people that lived down below, uh, obviously there was a lot of construction.
Oh, yeah.
Dust, noise. Uh, considering the magnitude of the construction and development, I would say we had very minor, a very minor amount of complaints.
Have you had, had any sense it's completion?
No, it's been very quiet over there.
I've actually been down there on the other side and it's actually very quiet versus being, you know, the noise from the street.
And you know, the, the wall construction and approval process was before Mr. Panko and Key Development. Uh, so he can't really speak. One of my concerns, one of the things I looked into when that wall was being proposed and developed, the distance from that wall to the, to the houses is several hundred feet. So even if it would collapse, it would not affect those houses. It, it might end up in their yard or something, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't take out any structures.
Would you plan maybe to put a row of trees or evergreens or something to sort of block some of the view of this wall?
Um, well, if we have the room, we'd be more than happy to.
At the base.
I believe some of that's already been addressed with their landscaping plan.
Did you visit the site? Did you?
I visited while I was going up. Mm-hmm. I'm just not a, you know, uh, soils engineer, so to speak.
You should be.
Excellent. My son actually was asking me about it. He said, freshman at Clemson.
I don't, I don't have a plan with me, but I know landscaping was an issue. Uh, and that's one of the reasons they're, they're, the whole face of the wall's gonna be green, so it's gonna look sort of like a, a hill. It's not gonna look like a masonry, masonry wall or a mound of dirt. It's gonna be green. But I do, I do know that there were some trees planted along the base.
Yeah, I remember when those plants came before us prior, it was, it was the course of more than a couple meetings to review all that information and everything. Um, so yeah, that, that portion of it was definitely thoroughly investigated.
We'll be, we'll be more than happy to work with staff on, on um, trying to meet, meet with your requirement of, of getting it decorative back there.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve twenty dash four dash S T and twenty dash six dash C.
Okay, motion. Do we have second? Ken?
Second.
Okay. I will do a roll call vote again. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Morgany?
Yes.
Ms. Krifter?
Yes.
And Mr.?
Yes.
And again, I'll abstain. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I've been waiting for this.
On a personal note, I, I know some community people say about, we don't get good business here in Monroeville and if Mission BBQ is one of those items coming in here, to be the second one in this area will be fantastic for, for Monroeville.
Yeah, they're excited too, so. Thank you. I'll let them know. Thank you.
Thank you. Be safe.
Save you a long drive out to Clemson.
All right, our next uh few items are, again, it's multiple one, uh, twenty dash six dash S T, forty-three oh one Northern Pike. Starbucks along with twenty dash four S U B and twenty dash four dash C. For twenty dash six dash S T, the applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a two thousand square foot building and associated site amenities. Property is two point seven five two acres located at forty-three oh one Northern Pike. Tax parcel eight five six dash S dash seven six and eight five six dash S dash zero nine zero in the C two Business Commercial zoning district. Twenty dash four dash S U B, the applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to consolidate tax parcels. Eight five six dash S dash seven six and eight five six dash S dash zero nine zero. The total acreage of the combined parcels is two point six five four acres. Property is located at forty-three oh one Northern Pike. Dash four dash C, the applicant is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to section four oh three planned group units of the Monroeville zoning ordinance number fourteen forty-three. As amended to permit two principal structures on one property. And again, the property is at forty-three oh one Northern Pike, tax parcels eight five six dash S dash seventy-six and eight five six dash S dash zero nine zero in the C two Business Commercial District. Gentlemen, state your name, please, and.
Good evening. My name is John Kamen. I represent and I'm part of forty-three oh one Northern Pike Partners. With me is Pat Cooper from Gateway Engineers. Um, as, and by the way, I do want to echo the comments of earlier. Thank you for coming out tonight. Um, I'm from Pittsburgh, so it wasn't so bad for me and the snow wasn't so bad, but it's still nice to have everyone here. Um, this is the old McGinnis sisters' site. Um, I'm sure it's. We remember it was a, a site which um was dilapidated and deteriorated for a period of time. Um, we bought it about a year ago, um, started a renovation of the site. Um, you can see from the, the picture here, that's not the best picture. We redid the facade, we redid the roof. Um, there was significant structural uh damage that had come from water off the turnpike, not being dealt with for, I don't know, maybe fifty years. Um, we had to put structural steel uh bases along the wall to hold the wall from the turnpike. Uh, new roof, new mechanicals, new paving, uh, new everything to make an investment in, into Monroeville. Um, as part of that process, we, we now have, if you want to go back to the, the site again, if you don't mind. Um, we, we have essentially four tenants. There's the nail salon, which is out. We're replacing that with a chiropractor. Um, Domino's is there, uh, Laura the florist is there, and then New China House, which is delivery only. Um, Domino's is probably eighty percent delivery. Um, after we completed the improvements, um, we were approached by Starbucks to go ahead and to put a second location in here. As sure any of you know, the, the one on uh, the highway here is a challenge, to say the very least. Um, try sitting in the drive-through with your kids for a couple hours and you'll understand. Um, so this is being put here in addition to take up some pressure off of that. Um, this is their new prototype, uh, which uh does um have a little bit better drive-through handle. As you can see, uh, Pat from. To allow for efficient queuing. And one of the things that we've done is um, in order to make sure you don't have the backup in front of the neighbor or N T B or whoever it may be, um, we did set up the drive-through in such a way so that the queuing actually runs into our lot. So you're not going to run into a situation where you have queuing that's going to be a problem on Northern Pike or anything else like that. It, it, there's plenty of room, but if there were to be a backup, it would only affect our own center and we designed it in such a way to handle that. Um, so we are asking for three separate items. Um, first is site plan approval to approve the building of the new building. Uh, this will be sitting right in the front of our parking lot and as the gentleman before said, retail is not easy right now. Two things. Number one, the fact that Starbucks wants to put a second location in Monroeville is a good sign for the strength of Monroeville. We also believe that it will be very helpful to us in being able to re-tenant the center and repurpose the center with uh better quality tenants and to deal with that twenty thousand square foot vacancy that's been there for a while. Um, so the, the second aspect of um our application is subdivision approval. When McGinnis Sisters owned this, um, they sold off this front car wash piece that is along uh Northern Pike and subdivided sort of this back piece together. Um, I don't know, they were planning on doing two lots. The car wash isn't our favorite in terms of its sightliness. We're working on that, but we don't own it. Um, but the additional parking that we needed to make this stay the same and keep it adequate, um, we're consolidating that separate lot that we do own with this lot so that there's overflow parking for employees and overflow parking there to keep these parking fields that service the center uh relatively free and available for the customer. So um, we are improving this to add this. There is some beautification that we will do on that hillside. Um, that was scheduled for us to be doing this, this uh spring anyhow. We ran out of time last year. But um, we want to clean that up, put some new fencing in and make it look so you don't feel like you're, you know, that close to the turnpike or, or, you know, dealing with litter or anything else that comes from the turnpike. Um, so that's the second piece of our application is the subdivision plan. Getting a parcel back together that was originally together before it was divided off for the car wash. Um, and then the third application that we have is our conditional use application and that is to allow multiple structures on the one property. Um, if Starbucks didn't, they want to stand alone with the drive-through, they won't come if they don't have that. So we think that this actually works nicely. Um, as you may know, when you come up to the lot, it's a long sort of narrow lot that's along the front and if you're shopping at any one of these places or visiting the chiropractor, you're not going to park all the way down on Northern Pike. So it was sort of wasteland anyhow, so we're happy to go ahead and add that. Um, we did have a meeting with Paul. By the way, Paul and his team have been great to work with. We, we work in lots of municipalities and they're not near. As, as Monroeville is, so you should know that. Um, we did agree to put a sidewalk along here where there's been sort of no sidewalk before. Uh, we've also had meetings with PennDOT. Uh, we had an initial meeting, we had a scoping meeting. We are doing a traffic study to go ahead and, and take a look at um the intersection. We think we have some solutions here that may make it a little bit easier, but one of the things you should know is that when we bought this, there were three sort of depressed curbs that ran along the front and there was no stormwater management. Um, the result of those three depressed curbs is if you were coming down Northern Pike, getting ready to make a turn on forty-eight, you didn't know where the, where to stop. You didn't know where traffic was coming out. Some of you may have seen the drivers from the delivery place. Cut around and go out through the Sunoco. So that wasn't a particularly safe condition and it wasn't particularly good for the center. So one of the things we did was we dug, and we worked again with staff on this. We dug a little bit of a stormwater basin in the front and we closed off all those access points. So there's only one access, which we put it our furthest away so that now it's a little bit better for people to be able to access because there's a defined drive aisle and there's a defined driveway as opposed to having depressed curb along the front. Um, so in terms of timing, uh, we are at lease with them. Uh, we believe that we will hopefully, assuming everything's right, start construction in April and be open uh by uh late fall next year. In time for pumpkin spice coffee. Yeah, there you go.
Address anything else? I can go through the review letters that we got.
Yeah, we, we, we did receive uh several comment letters. We have addressed them. Uh, got quick turnarounds. We got another stormwater letter today. It's nothing that we can't address here shortly and, and get back in. But we think we can uh meet everything that's required of the, uh, the, the Monroeville staff.
And, and one thing I would say too is there was basically no stormwater management before we were putting in tanks and we're controlling basically the entire lot, which was previously uncontrolled, so.
Currently, this, this lot flows, all the water from this lot sheet flows onto Northern Pike. You'll be collecting this whole area here, yeah, put an extensive underground detention tank uh here. Into an inlet. We're working with PennDOT on that.
Um, I, I have a couple questions. As far as the drive-through lane, is the second lane the intent to, for that to be an escape lane only?
It's an escape lane only.
Will there be signage to note that? Because.
There will be.
Double queuing seems to be happening in a lot of places anymore.
This is not a double queue.
Okay. And then your parking redesign, uh, does, is, is that adequate for, you know, possible future tenants that might have more vehicular traffic versus, you know, Domino's or China House that are mostly takeout?
So it is. Um, what, what's uh contemplated by the uh shared facilities is, is essentially that. Um, so you know, Starbucks has a heavy morning traffic and heavy drive-through traffic. Um, we will, uh, those are not necessarily the times that those. So we think that there'll be some sharing, if not of here, from sort of here up as the day goes forward. So we think that we're adequate, we're basically the exact same number of spaces that we have now. Um, without the Starbucks, by adding this lot and striping some areas behind the, the building that were essentially just garbage, I mean, literally garbage, um, we are able to go ahead and to fill out so that we can drive employee parking back there and we can drive uh Starbucks employee parking and other parking over here. So uh, our, our net amount of spaces is exactly the same as it is.
How many cars are you able to stack in the uh drive-through lane before it actually starts coming up through the entrance?
The uh, drive-through is going to be signed, working with Paul. So that it actually comes this motion here and it well exceeds what Starbucks asks for. I can't remember what the exact number was.
Yeah, so, so if you think about the one on uh twenty-two right now, as you're coming around, you, you start on this side and then you come around the building and loop. So we have that and then we have all of this up here that will be queuing for that. So it's probably triple what you have there now. So I don't know that we can get a cow or cow, but we can figure that out.
What I've been told is, I mean, this could queue back to. What I've been told is, I mean, this could queue back to here. What I've been told is if the line is that long, nobody gets in line. It's just too much.
Just to get a rough idea, the cars shown on the plan are to scale. So I mean, if you just, you know, just eyeball it, you could cars that'll fit in that queue queue lane.
I think it was, my recollection was, I think we had fifteen to that point. But still have another, probably ten.
And we looked at a number of different designs on this too, all with queuing in mind because, like I said, we know and we certainly heard loud and clear from Monroeville, you know, about the problems and backing up in front of the N T B and backing up in front of the other tenants. So we did, there was some other prototypes. This is the way that gives us the max queuing on site. Minimal impact to us and certainly no impact to Northern Pike.
And the location that is on twenty-two right now, that's staying or is that going to go?
It's staying. It's staying.
This is to alleviate the problems there. That's what I want.
You referred to the old McGinnis structure as junk.
Yes, it was junk.
No anticipated use of that building?
We've had some discussions with the number of tenants who have been interested in coming, none of which we want. So we think that they, we put a lot of money into it. We think that there's a certain caliber of tenant that we'd like to have and a certain caliber of tenant that, you know, is appropriate for Monroeville. So there's been some, nothing against those uses. They're just not for us. So there've been some people who wanted to come in and do some auto repair, come in the back and use that. We're not doing that. There've been daycare facilities that wanted to come. We're not doing that. There've been other types of facilities that have come and religious facilities, we're not doing that. So there has been, I think, we had some momentum pre-COVID. During COVID, of course, everything has completely stopped. Some of those users did come along over the last several months and we just said, you know, we're not interested. We'll wait until we see what it's like on the other side. We're not in any leveraged position that we've got to make a bad deal, so we're going to wait till something good comes along.
Renovations that you did to that property did make a drastic improvement, so.
Thank you.
Congrats to you guys for the effort put in.
And we think that this Starbucks will help us to lease. More likely than not, what you'll see, I mean, I'd love for somebody to come take the whole thing. It's unlikely, just based on sort of the dimensions that we have. More likely than likely, what you'll see is we'll be doing store rooms here and then we'll just leave the because that will give us a better quality of tenant upfront. That will give us, you know, people don't want the bowling alleys anymore, which are, you know, small fronts and deep. So we're flexible as to that. We think Starbucks will help drive that. But, you know, like I said, we're going to wait it out and wait till we have a tenant that we think's the right caliber for us and for Monroeville.
Mr. Reelton, did you have any other comments?
Traffic is the big concern with this one. Left turns in and out. As Mr. Cane has stated, we had a phone call with them, our traffic engineer and PennDOT, and they're working on some solutions. I believe we'll have more of that information for the council meeting.
Yep.
One of the things I had requested was an overall plan, like a satellite view showing the big intersection, Northern Pike and how the flow of traffic will happen. So have that plan ready for council.
Sure.
Maybe even show that to us before that meeting so we can discuss it ahead of time. So try to reduce the amount of blindsided, getting, you know, you getting comments for the first time, standing at the podium.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that.
Traffic is the biggest concern, but they're working towards it. PennDOT's on board. So we'll see what happens.
And I agree. Just going to the one entrance and exit has made a difference already in that location and.
Yes, it's helped quite a bit.
There's more than needs done in that area than just what you guys are facing unfortunately.
Yeah, so PennDOT has been, has been good with us. We spend a lot of times, if we don't get the left turn in, we don't have a deal. Just, you know, Starbucks wants for our center, so we're looking at some solutions to try and make that work. We think some signage, maybe some different painting on the ground will make it work. But, you know, we're committed to doing it and it's good for us. It's good for Monroeville. So we're working through it. One other thing I should tell you is that we, in anticipation, this deal has taken almost a year to get done. In anticipation of moving this along, we did do counts of the road already. So we had all that stuff done before the holidays, so there's no discrepancy as to what it is. COVID affected it a little bit, but there's an add-on factor that they're putting to put it back. So we're very much engaged with PennDOT pushing it, pushing it along.
This is quite property. There's no connection points back there to?
Unfortunately, there's not. I mean, there's a, there's like a
There's like an office, medical office building back there?
There's, yeah, there's a little office building back there and then there's a service road to the turnpike that's sort of off the back, but there's a little bit of an elevation change. There's nothing really we can do. Our target is really, is trying to get this, to clean this up because, you know, it's your front door. You want it, you want it to look good.
Any comments or questions?
Well, I assume you're going to have a left turn lane on Northern Pike to get into the place.
Right. That movement has to happen for us, yes.
And that turning lane should extend so that people exiting a left onto Northern Pike can get out.
So our driveway will be the conventional drive. The left turn lane, I'm talking, right now, there are actually multiple lanes on Northern Pike. There's a left, there's a right turn lane, there's this straight lane, and then there's a left turn lane. And then there are two lanes going in, what is that, Pat? That's east. Going east. There are two lanes there. So there, right now, that first lane, as you come in, serves as like a de facto left turn lane. So they're just trying to look and figure out what makes the best sense for the vehicular movements there. Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, again, I guess that's something between them and PennDOT will work out.
I'd love to see it.
Yeah.
That's a big problem. Been the problem with this area all along. I mean, the only fact that the Guinness Sisters had such a record, that they were, their faithful customers would go there. But, you know, it's always an issue right there with the traffic.
Because even right now, coming down that Haymaker Road, right across from the entrance, that's a right-hand turn only.
That's right only, right only, correct.
People go up and turn around to McDonald's. It's, it's very awkward.
Yeah, well, we're working on making it better. I mean, it helps, helps us, helps everybody.
Yeah. But this proposed plan doesn't change the way the entrance currently operates. Is that correct?
Correct. It's just going to increase the volume.
Yeah, it's just to increase volume.
Well, better marking would help.
Yeah, we think better marking, better signage. And, you know, we're exploring with PennDOT some signs that say, "Stop here", some white paint bar to allow the intersection to remain free. I mean, there's a lot of different things we're looking at right now, but I leave that to the traffic engineers.
Any further questions or calling this Mr. Paul? Anyone else? Would anybody like to make a motion for all three of these twenty-six dash S T, twenty-four dash S U B and twenty-four dash C?
I'd like to make a motion to with that condition set forth.
Motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Well, I'll second, but I think they're on the condition that this traffic thing be figured out.
Well, it's all subject to PennDOT anyhow. I mean, it's PennDOT Road and there's no, I mean, it's subject to getting PennDOT's approval, so.
Because that's, that's been a headache for years and years, for forty years.
Okay, we have motion and a second. I will take a rule call vote then. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McGrante?
Yes.
Ms. Kripke?
Yes.
And Mr. Conway?
Yes.
And I will again abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item twenty dash C dash, or twenty-five dash C, Dale Financial LLC. The applicant is requesting conditional use approval to install a one hundred and fifty square foot billboard pursuant to Monroeville zoning ordinance number fourteen forty-three as amended, section three oh seven point one four billboards. Property is located at twenty-six sixty-seven Monroeville Boulevard, tax parcel six three eight dash S dash zero two eight in the C two business commercial zoning district. Welcome the applicant. Please say your name and tell us what you got to.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kevin Dale and Dale Financial. We own a number of marketing companies, both through digital. We do things online. I also own about three hundred billboards from about Huntington, Pennsylvania to Huntington, West Virginia is kind of our footprint. I live right down twenty-two in Greensburg. Our company was started in La Trobe. We, we say it was started by Arnold Palmer. It technically wasn't, but he was best friends with my grandfather who had property right along the main stretch. And he said, "Hey, why don't you put a billboard on your property and I'll put a, I'll put my Cadillac dealership on it." And that, my dad was actually a pastor and we were struggling and anyway, one sign turned into three hundred. So that's our story and it is what it is. But we're excited about this potential opportunity. We, we essentially just do family-friendly advertising. We're extremely careful about what we put on our signs, mostly because my name is right underneath it. My main brand is Statler Billboards. And careful. We turn away people that have anything that would be seen as disrupting. In fact, there was another sign near one of mine recently that, that they put an adult bookstore up and my mother called me that day and she said, "That better not be yours because, you know, you'll be in trouble." So with that being said, your code has a number of conditions set forth in it that we, we want to comply with each and every one of them. This is a conditional use. And I brought counsel tonight just to make sure that we were doing everything according to the code. And really what we're going to do is just go through it and make sure that we're highlighting every area of that. And we can do that as quickly as possible. I do appreciate you coming out tonight as well, so.
Yes, and I want to introduce myself. My name is attorney Alex Brown. I'm an associate at the law firm of Meyer Dara. Offices Thank you so much for making it out here in these weather conditions. The travel from Greensburg to Monroeville tonight was dicey, to say the least, but we're happy to be here. We look forward to meeting our burden of showing that we are complying with all of the objective requirements of Monroeville's billboard ordinance. And so how we're going to show that is through a question and answer type of session. I would like the commission to have an opportunity to ask questions to Kevin Dale at the conclusion of our presentation, if there's anything you would like to add on to that. So with that, we'll get started by talking about the specific zoning district that this billboard will be installed in. What is the district?
Business district, which is really the only business, or the only district that allows billboards as a conditional use.
And let's talk a bit about the dimensions of the billboard, as I know there are requirements in the ordinance as to how large and how these billboards can be structured.
Yeah, I don't know if you have a copy of the drawing in front of you, other than what I have here, whether the camera can see it or not.
It's in there.
Okay, yeah, so it's pretty simple to see. The dimensions are ten by fifteen, which is exactly what's stipulated in the code for a total, total square footage of one hundred and fifty square feet.
Will the billboard, when it's installed, be within five hundred feet of a boundary line of an R district?
Could you step towards the microphone, please?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Will a billboard, if installed, be within five hundred feet of the boundary line of an R district?
No, and we have a letter from, sorry, escapes me. But anyway, we have a letter from, from MS consultant engineers and planners. Just, Paul, what's, who's the gentleman that put this together?
I believe that's a Fenny.
Yes, okay. And he said that, he had checked that and he said it was approved and submitted.
Will the billboard, if installed, be within seven hundred and fifty feet of the line of any public or private school property, park, library, church, or other house of worship?
No, and I'm sure the board's familiar with exactly where this location is. It's seven hundred and fifty feet is pretty much from, from like Styles by Grace, if you're familiar with that, up to the Shogun Restaurant. It's about the, the area there.
Will the billboard be installed in a manner that will block the view from the adjacent road, street, or driveway? Or of any existing sign?
No, and it's actually on an outside curve, so like to not, you know, interfere with anything around it.
Will it block the view from any structure if it is installed, the billboard?
It, it will not.
Will it be installed in a manner that will limit or reduce the light and ventilation requirements under the municipal planning code?
No, it will not.
Will the billboard be installed within the clear sight triangle of a public street, road, or roadway on which it is situated?
I, I don't believe this would.
Will it obstruct or impede traffic safety in any other way?
No.
Will the billboard be no closer than seven hundred and fifty feet from any other billboard or outdoor advertising structure?
So according to the definition of an outdoor advertising structure, that's something that promotes businesses that are not the primary business of that location. The definition, it will not.
And I would like to bring the planning commission's attention to the Monroeville zoning ordinance, ordinance fourteen forty-three. Article six is the definition section of that ordinance. And it creates or shows definitions at issue that will indicate that our billboard is not within seven hundred and fifty feet of another billboard or an advertising structure. So the ordinance defines a billboard and or outdoor advertising sign as quote, "A sign displaying changeable advertising copy which pertains to a business, organization, event, person, place, service, or product not principally located or sold on the premises upon which said sign is located." And so definition is that we were told by the consulting engineer that there is a Minneki Car Care sign within seven hundred and fifty feet of the billboard that we plan on installing. We believe, however, that that Minneki sign is not considered an outdoor advertising structure or a billboard because the Minneki Car Care sign is the same, or it's advertising for the same use that that property is. It's a, it's a Minneki Car Care facility. So we believe that the engineering letter referring to that potential issue to the conditional use is incorrect and that we are in compliance with that seven hundred and fifty foot distance requirement between the nearest billboard and the billboard that we wish to install.
Does that make sense, what he's saying? Consultant, and we wanted to clarify that, just in case there was any problem.
That's a good question. Do you know where the new A vets is being built? Now, is that seven hundred and fifty feet? Because they're obviously going to put their own sign up there.
Again, it's the same thing. It's not an off-premise sign.
Pardon me?
If A vets puts a sign up for A vets, it's not an off-premise sign. It's just a sign.
It's the same as the Minneki sign.
Correct. It's not considered a billboard.
I was just wondering.
They don't need to, they don't need to comply with the seven hundred and fifty foot of spacing.
Will the billboard have no greater than a hundred and fifty square feet per sign face?
It will not, according to the drawing.
And how many sign faces will the billboard have?
It has two faces. They're in a V configuration, just according to the code.
Will the billboard exceed ten feet in height?
No, it, the ten feet tall and the width is fifteen feet.
And how tall will the structure be as measured from the curb of the closest street, according to the plan?
The plan shows twenty-four foot overall height, which is according to code.
Let's talk a little bit about the construction methods of the billboard. Will be constructed in accordance with the Monroeville municipality planning code?
Yes.
Was it designed by a professional or civil engineer licensed in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yeah, it's stamped by engineer.
What is the engineering firm?
This is stamped by Carl Everett Thompson, Jr. I'm not sure what the firm is. Oh, Thompson Engineering Services.
Gibson Thomas?
Uh, that, I think they did the plan, the site plan.
The structural part.
Yeah, the structural part is by Thomas Engineering.
Will the billboard have vertical support?
Yes, it's shown on the drawing.
And will the support be no more than And will the support be no more than three feet in diameter or width?
No, it is 36 inches.
Will it be independently supported and have vertical supports of metal which are galvanized or otherwise treated to prevent rust and corrosion?
Yeah, this is not going to be built on a couple telephone poles with, you know, plywood. It's, believe it or not, I actually climb up on them myself. So they're very safe. So.
Let's talk about wind load. Will the one vertical support for this billboard be capable of enabling the entire side face to be able to withstand a minimum wind load of 60 miles per hour?
Yeah, it's actually set for 115 miles per hour.
Will the base of the billboard structure be permanently landscaped?
Yes.
With suitable shrubbery or shrubs of a minimum height?
Yes.
And will that screen the foundation of the billboard structure for passersby?
Yes, as according to the code, yes.
Will you maintain the landscaping in an attractive and healthy manner?
Yes.
Let's talk a little bit about the lighting of the billboard. Will the billboard be constructed with display lighting?
This will not have external lighting. This is internally LED display.
And will it be constructed in a manner so there's no lighting glaring upon adjacent properties in any manner that would be in violation of the Monroeville zoning code?
Yes, the, it's, it can't project more than 1.5-foot candles upon adjacent properties.
Will there be any display lighting operating between midnight and 6:00 AM prevailing local time?
No, we'll set that and we'll keep it up with daylight savings, time changes, and things of that nature.
Be any sign face or billboard display lighting that moves, flashes, or emits noise on the billboard?
No, there won't.
And will there be any display lighting creating distraction, confusion, nuisance or hazard to traffic or any other passing vehicles?
No.
And will there be any colored external display lighting?
No.
Let's talk about maintenance obligations.
Just one question. So just to clarify, so it's not an electronic billboard. It's just internally lit for display lighting, is what we're saying.
I guess by that definition, it's an LED electronically lit.
Although you won't have like electronic displays or anything of that nature, or is that, yes?
No, the answer is yes. It will have an, an LED face.
Okay, well, will it change? Is that what you're
Yeah, the, the
ad and then there's 30 seconds later, another ad will come, you know, another
Yes, it has to be a static change though. There can't be movement in the change of any kind.
Okay.
Let's talk about maintenance obligations. Will the billboard structure be entirely painted every three years?
Yes.
Will it be constructed with non-combustible material and be maintained in a good condition?
Yes.
Will the structure be inspected every 10 years by a qualified Pennsylvania registered civil engineer? And will that engineer provide Monroeville with a certificate that the billboard is structurally sound?
Yes.
Let's talk about approvals from other governmental entities. Have you contacted Allegheny County to seek any permits or approvals regarding this billboard?
Yes, they do not require a separate permit. With that being said, if you want to make it upon receiving, you know, notice from them. The problem is, and I run this in every municipality, both some, the counties and PennDOT always make their permit contingent upon municipal permit. And oftentimes the municipal permit says, we need PennDOT permission first. So we always try to make them contingent upon each other and just to make sure that, does that make sense? Now, interestingly enough, this, that's, PennDOT refers to that as Highway 815, 815. And that is not a controlled route by PennDOT. Can you confirm that, Paul?
We consider that a county road.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So when I went to get PennDOT approval, I met with the district engineer and he said, he actually lives in this neighborhood, actually.
Shane?
Yeah.
Shane Rose?
Yeah. And so I have an email from him. Good morning, Kevin. This roadway, H15, is not a controlled highway. Therefore, no permit from PennDOT is required to erect an OAD, which means out, out of home display at this location. So.
Can, can you submit a copy of that?
I can, yeah. I mean, I can just give it to you now or however.
Perfect, the formal process is.
That's all we need. Thank you.
Now, if you need something additional, he said he'd be happy to supply that as well. The only reason it would require a permit is if it could be seen from 22. And so he actually, he's actually working from home right now. And so when I talked to him, he actually just drove out there and said, no, we won't need that either. So.
At this time, that'll conclude our presentation, but we are happy to take any questions that you may have.
First question I have is, do you have control of the lighting that the display does?
Yes.
Are you familiar at all with 22? We have the
It's not going to look at the Jona sign.
Yeah, because I'm just looking, coming on that curb. If it's very bright and blinding, I can see somebody missing that curb.
Yeah, and I don't know how that's, like, that, there's, there are lighting rules by PennDOT. In fact, the light that comes out of those signs in the middle of the day when the sun's displaying on it compared to the nighttime, it's, it's like 100 times more to see it. And for some reason, I don't know why that's not being effectively done. In fact, it's detrimental to our industry, really. But I'm, I'm not going to operate like that in any, there's, there's sensors, those sensors can be tested and adjusted to make sure they're always outputting the right amount.
Questions?
Mr. Wildon, is there anything that they didn't address in the
Presentation?
Yeah, you covered, I think, all the questions we could have come up with and then some.
Well, we didn't want to waste your time in any way, but we just wanted to cover everything. So.
It was a, it was a very good presentation. I would encourage you guys to, if, if this does go on to council, that you would provide them with the same information. Because that's where, where it really matters. We're just a recommending body.
Sure. We appreciate the advice.
Any other comments, questions? Nobody left in the audience, so I guess.
Nobody.
How far is it off the roadway?
There's actually telephone wires there that are pushing us a little further off the roadway than we would normally. I mean, typically, we try to be a couple feet off the right of way, which is required. I talked to a representative from Duquesne Light and he gave me the right of way distance. I don't know me, but we actually had to push the sign back to stay away from the wires that go across there. So I
Just looking at the picture, I would say it's 30 or 40 feet.
Yeah, the sign itself is only 24 feet tall overall height. If you look at the foundation, there's absolutely no chance it could fall over. But if, if it did, it, it wouldn't even affect that anything.
Is this going to take any parking away from the Meinike business? I mean, I'm sure he's on board with this because it's on his property. But it, does that, because he doesn't have a whole lot of parking in that lot.
No, and if you, I don't know if you can see the elevation picture, but his sign there, it was there in 1986 when he bought the property and he hates it and people drive into it all the time. And as part of this process, he's like, when you get your equipment and can you actually take down that, that sign that I have? So in fact, I almost hit that sign just going in and out, doing my work. So.
Yeah, it's
I'm trying to explain the order.
It's a weird, it's in a weird spot.
If you look, there's no paint on the bottom of it.
And the, the block around it is all, like, it's been hit a lot of times. You know, you have to, when you back in there to drop your vehicle off, you got to maneuver around. So that's going to be removed out of there.
Yes, yeah, I mean.
I'm just thinking, is he losing any parking spaces with this?
No, I think he would be gaining a spot because the pole itself is actually going to go at the very edge of his pavement. It's, it's what we call a full flag where the, the pole itself is at the very edge, the fur, further away from the road. I mean, I have to spend more money to build it that way, but that's how we're doing it. So.
If you lay your plan flat, they can pick it up on a camera above you.
Like right there?
Can you, can you zoom in on that, Jared? Do you have you just have the detail sheet?
I have both.
Go, go to the site plan. It shows the location of the sign and the edge of pavement.
Yeah, hopefully you can zoom in. Well.
Yeah, he can zoom in.
Yeah. You can point out the existing sign.
Yeah, point.
So their existing sign would be here. And then you can see, this is the edge of the pavement. So the pole itself is actually going to go into the grass there. So we're not going to take any, any space away from him.
Yes, just based on that scale, it looks like you're good 40-some feet off of the road.
So it's not going to be a driving hazard at all? I was looking at this picture that
Yeah, that's a little misleading as well.
So just to put it into scale, because obviously that's an elevation picture, the, his Meinike sign is 10 feet wide. And this sign is proposed at 15 feet.
It's not much.
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually the smallest sign I'm going to have in my entire inventory. Most of my signs are 48 feet wide, believe it or not.
And if, if that Meinike sign is proposed to be removed, certainly mention that to council.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I can do that. Sure, no problem.
Yeah, make, make that part of your presentation.
What's he going to do for advertising?
Well, he wants to
Put something on the bottom. Put it on your sign.
There's a trade-off.
Yeah, always there's a trade-off.
He gets the free signage.
What's, what's the term? There's no free lunch or something like that? So.
Expect to get compensated some way, correct?
He's, he's going to be compensated pretty well, yeah. So he's building another location in Penn Hills right now.
On Rhode Island Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah, so he, I, you know, in any project, it gets more expensive than anybody budgets. So he's said, he wants to be compensated very quickly, but we're going to do the process as it is.
Any other comments, questions or anything? Or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of 20-5ST that the addition set forth.
Mr. Conway, seconds. And we will do a rule call vote again. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McGrante?
Yes.
Ms. Krivtov?
Yes.
And Mr. Conway?
Yes.
And I will stand. It passes through.
Thank you. Thank you, members. All right, be safe. My wife wants me to stay in the hotel right up the road. I said, maybe we can make
Probably worse than when we came in, I would imagine.
I usually don't
See you soon.
Take credence to these warnings of these storms, but this one's pretty nasty.
You don't believe it, I hope.
All right, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have is the zoning ordinance work session. Is that, do we want to do that after this meeting or table that until?
We can just discuss it very quickly after adjournment.
Okay. Do that then, take motion to adjourn.
All right, so move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If they close, meeting adjourned.